They do not like picking up the pace.
At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be the agenda item number one, to consider the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting as well as the work session that would council held. Both of those meetings were held on October 11th. The council does have the minutes for both of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note?
Move to approve.
By Steve, seconded by Amanda, to approve the minutes of both meetings as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda item number two is a public hearing on a property tax abatement request for Daisy and Tulip Holdings LLC. We'll have a public hearing on this property tax abatement, and following that, we will consider a resolution that would grant the abatement. So with that, I'll call on Stephen. Stephen, are you handling this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Stephen Anderson, city clerk.
So before you, I have, there is the property tax abatement for Daisy and Tulip Holdings. They recently acquired a piece of property on Airport Road. This abatement request is for $6,928 over a four-year period.
And Lauren Dytes, our EDA director, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Do you have anything you would like to add?
I can just go over the project briefly. So Daisy and Tulips is actually a subsidiary of DNG Excavating. They'll be building a storage facility for their snow removal equipment. Previously, they had been renting facilities throughout the city of Marshall for different properties, actually, to be exact, and all of those have changed ownership in the last couple of years, so they no longer have space here in Marshall to rent. So that's where they're looking to build their own facility. I will note in the packet, there is an error in the tax abatement sheet on the amount of taxes received by the city. This is originally a 10-year estimate. That's actually scaled back. The exact number is 9,628, not 34,462, just as a note to the council.
Okay, thank you. Is there any input as part of the public hearing, either from the council or from members of the audience that are here this evening?
Mr. Mayor, just one clarification on the item report we got. It says requesting a commercial tax abatement. On the resolution, it says home tax abatement.
Yep, we had pulled, passed resolution, and there are two errors in there about residential versus commercial, so we will get those updated in 1.2 and 1.3.
Very good. Any other input as part of this public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now consider the resolution that would allow for the property tax abatement for this property.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor Lauren, where exactly specifically for the public is this?
So it's in the central addition, next to Central out on Airport Road.
It's not going to impact at all airport development or anything like that?
No, no. It's just one little end parcel that we had available on that edge of town, so about two, just under two and a half acres there that they recently purchased.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. If we bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda, and they include introduction of the ordinance amending Chapter 86, Article 4-1, excuse me, 6-1, Section 86-165, the structures in residential district, and call for a public hearing, consider the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, consider the request of Prairie Home Hospice and Community Care for Light Up the Night Parade on Friday, November 25th, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency memorandum of agreement for the PFAS monitoring plan, the considered contract with the state of Minnesota and the city of Marshall for the hazmat services to southwest Minnesota, and then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Item seven, please.
Any other item? If not, I'd entertain a motion for the remaining items.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig for approval of the items on the consent agenda, with the exception of agenda item number seven. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So agenda item number seven, the contract with state of Minnesota and the city of Marshall for hazmat services to southwest Minnesota. John?
Really, no questions or whatever on it. I just wanted to just maybe put a little emphasis on it, that this is $100,000 that came to the city. There's no matching funds needed, all for training in the merit center. So I think that's a very nice deal, and thanks to Jim Marshall and Quentin Brunsvold for you guys' work on that, and rest of you on the merit center. So it's good.
Jim or Quentin, any comments you want to make at this time? Director of Public Safety, Jim Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I can just make a couple of quick comments. It's surprising when you look at this contract. It's been 20 years since the city marshal has started providing the service to southwest Minnesota. And in September of this year was the end of the current contract. It was a five-year contract that we had with the state of Minnesota. They extended it a month for us, and then had asked us to submit a proposal. They put it out for RFPs. And Quentin, Fire Chief Brunsvold, and I put a lot of time into this proposal that we submitted to the state fire marshal's office, and we're fortunate to receive it again. There was some nervousness on our part because it gave the opportunity for other chemical assessment teams in state of Minnesota to bid for our area, and we put forward a competitive bid and received it, and very fortunate, very thankful for this. And it's really gone, you know, for the last two years, it's been under the umbrella of the fire department, and it's just been a good thing for the city marshal in our 11 Coney area.
Thank you, Chief Marshall.
And with that, I make a motion to enter into the agreement.
I'll second that motion, and then I have a comment.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion, Craig?
One is, Jim, was there anybody, any other bidders?
We don't know that.
Oh, they won't tell you? Okay. And then the second thing is just thank you to the fire department and to all you guys that picked it up and moved with it to keep that alive. Marshall took that site over. The fire department, it was kind of, it started out as an industry co-op thing and separate from the fire department, and that agreement was real functional at first because the industries had a strong internal presence of that type of response capability. But as that started to dwindle away, it was hard to maintain the staff and the training, and the fire department picked it up and worked hard with it, and I'm proud of what you guys did. You should be proud of yourselves, too. That's an awesome job, and thank you for doing that for the community and for the region.
Thank you, Craig. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number nine, the Marshall Fire Department aerial apparatus replacement. This is an item that is perhaps a generational item that is considered because it's an important apparatus, and it's one that is necessary in the area, but it's rarely replaced. So with that, Quentin, you and your team have been working on this for some time. I'll let you present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, it's been worked on for a very, very long time. We've talked about it here a few times, obviously. It's came to different committees and whatever as well, and I just really want to throw kudos to the guys behind me here. There's a 10-person committee that was formed, started in end of March, beginning of April. It was led by our deputy chief, Jake Olson, and really put a lot of time in research, done market research, a lot of traveling, trying to find what's going to be the best thing for the next aerial apparatus for the citizens of the city of Marshall and the surrounding areas that really rely on that. So they did a great job, came up with a good proposal, solicited some excellent vendors that are out there for this, and really kind of worked through that process here. Obviously, in your bid packet, all the information that we are supplied is also supplied to you, and we have very competitive bids to work on. And at the end of the day, we are very confident that the bid from Rosenbauer or from general safety, general fire safety is going to be, excuse me, is going to be suitable for our needs.
Okay, thank you, Quentin. And Quentin Brunsvold, Marshall Fire Chief, open up for questions from the council. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve.
I'd second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda for, to approve the Marshall Fire Department aerial apparatus replacement. Discussion on that motion?
The discussion I'll have, and this is a discussion that we need to have as a council. I fully support this. We don't know how we're going to pay for it. And I know I was sending Sharon stuff today on different payment options. I think before we order this, we figure out how to pay for this, because it's a $1.5 million purchase with approximately $350,000 of interest tax on top of that. And if we delay it a month before we order it, that's fine, but I know Sharon on a few cents of stuff to EJ. I talked to a couple of different local banks in the area that do finance fire trucks, do finance them through a lease-back program. I would like to have conversations with them, us as a council, as a fire department, how to do that, which would save the city money over doing necessarily a general obligation bond. You know, right now, the proposal they sent to me, it was First Bank and Bank who I contacted today, and I also contacted First Dakota Bank out of Sioux Falls. They're not local, but my business maker there is somewhat local. And they have several options on helping us fund this, possibly saving the city money. So I think we should maybe look at those options before we order the trucks. We have, because if we order this, all seven of us on this council could be gone in three years, and this is paid for. We don't, well, man, they should still be here. We honestly want to drop that on another council in 2025. We order a $1.5 million truck, and they don't have money to pay for it. They don't have an option or an answer to pay for it. So I think before we, and I'm speaking as a businessman, this is something I do on the business side with my business. Before I make a large purchase, I know how that's paid for.
I'm going to call on EJ Moberg. You've done a substantial amount of background work before this recommendation came forward on the costs and the financing, so.
Yes, we have looked at various options. One of them would be, as Councilmember Lazinski indicated, would be bonding. There's also private place debt, which would be possible through a bank or leasing. Those options at this point weren't the focus of what this meeting was, the way I saw it. If you want to make it that, it definitely could be, because, you know, when we move forward, if we would bond for it, for example, we wouldn't actually bond for it until 2025, so that year. With, in this case, there's a 600-day order period, and I think it's going to be extended, in my understanding, into the first quarter of 2025 to hit when the capital improvement plan had this as targeted. So there are different options we can look at. I think we need to address all of them. We don't know what the interest rate's going to be in two and a half years relative to that as well. So some of the options we come up with today may not be as attractive in that period. So there's a lot of options out there. If you'd like to go that route, we can definitely try to firm something else up, but it's going to be difficult just because of the fact we're talking about two-plus years before we would actually implement whatever plan that is.
So what you're saying is that the, all options can be looked at, but payment isn't due until 2025, and that's the time really to hone in on the best option for the city?
Right.
Well, that's not necessarily true, because there's options where, if we look at the finance, you're somewhat correct, EJ.
Yep.
But there's also prepayment bonuses. Let's say we can somehow lease back this truck. You can get 25,000, 30,000, 40,000 off of the initial cost of this truck, because maybe we look at the option of paying for it now, and I know, Russ, you had suggested years ago that they put money into a fund. Well, that's virtually what we'd be doing, because they'd set them up on a 10-year amortization. Well, so we're two years ahead on the payments. And, you know, again, I don't want to throw out interest rates. The bank asked me not to do that yet. They would like to meet us privately. That there's those options, too, that we can capture a gain of 30,000, 40,000 by prepaying on this truck without necessarily having to pay all the money upfront because we're financing part of it. Those are all options that need to be looked into. Again, a $1.5 billion purchase with a potential of 350,000 to 400,000, you're looking at a potential $2 million expenditure, and I just don't want to take us and dump that on the council in three years. I don't think that's fair.
I don't know if anybody read, excuse me, Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but what Councilman Lazinski's discussed or talking about is if we purchase the chassis when it is built and pay for it at the time of delivery, they'll give us a discount. If we purchase the aerial device, the actual ladder that goes on top of the truck when it is built and ready to be installed, at that time, they'll give us a discount. And at that, and it's about 4.16% discount total off of it, which is about 65 grand-ish, right around there, if we pay for it. If we wait until the very end, which is what has been previously discussed, then it's the full amount contracted price that you see, 1.470838. So there's an option out there. I can't remember off the top of my head, and maybe Chief Olson remembers how long the chassis takes to arrive. We can plan for that a little sooner, and then how long the aerial, I can't remember off the top of my head, because we kind of didn't talk about that a lot.
Sharon, you had a comment?
And EJ can follow up on this as well. Each year, we have our CIP plan, which is a plan, and things get moved occasionally. But the greater perspective on the CIP is how do we fit in or slot in needed infrastructure or equipment and fit it into either a bonding schedule or payment schedule? So we have our payment plans for all the past issuance, and we project into the future. We do not advocate for prepayment at this time. We don't have room for it. We have other competing needs financially, and again, EJ can correct me on this. I do want to just kind of say, I think the financial, finance options are valid discussions, and I think that is something we would want to explore, which is different than the purchasing discussion. So it's really more exploring financing options in the future and whether or not you want to purchase it. I know the second agenda item after this is pursuing an AFG grant, and I'm sure that the fire chief can talk a little bit about ARPA and county requests as well. But I think I'm correct in saying, EJ, that we would not advocate at this time for prepayment.
That is correct. Just from our standpoint, we don't have the money sitting here available today. That's why we'd be looking to finance it at some point.
And that's why it has been placed in the CIP for that year.
So by doing financing, I could free up the money to prepay it without taking money out of our budget and save 60. I mean, these are all options that I think on a purchase of this size, which I fully support, but I think we need to look at all this as being good stewards of taxpayer money. I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse and order the truck, and then in three years, how are we going to pay for this? I think it'd be good for us to weigh into this, and if we delay the order one or two months, I don't think that's going to affect.
No, I do not think, I don't think it will accept. We were told of a, if we don't sign this purchase order by the end of the month, there's a price increase coming after that. That's what I was told. I don't have it in writing anywhere unless Chief Olson's got it.
It's just been from what Rosenbauer had said, it's coming, but it's going to be one.
Right. It's a, yes.
And you had two more points?
Two things. If we prepay for any part of this, it will likely disqualify us for the AFG grant. Just want to be very clear of that. So that's an option, but will disqualify us completely because you can't pay for anything because federal grant dollars are going to do that if we get it. And I can't remember the second part.
If we apply for the grant, this truck is still a year and a half out.
We'd know. Oh, yeah, two years, correct.
We'd know ahead of time if we got the grants, and that can tie into maybe giving us some of those discounts as we, you know. And I guess what I'm asking is us to take a step back, maybe have a special meeting on financing this truck, because there's different options that people have out there. And again, it's something that could be done within the next 30 days, 60 days.
I'd want clarity, just making sure that this price increase isn't coming. We've had this bid for quite some time, and had gone back to the vendor many times, making sure that the price is still good. I know 30 days is not a long period of time, but we've had it for many, many months for that, and they've held strong with that. The thing that I forgot about, but I now remember, thank you, was that this was actually on the CIP for five years, excuse me, for 2020, and we pulled it off. I actually, we evaluated just the truck in general, and the return that we got, that we're getting still from the refurbishment that was done in 2008, or, excuse me, 2012, we really wanted to make that work a little bit longer. I mean, that's why we spent the $165,000. Let's try to get a little bit more life on it. And it's been a great truck, and it was a good decision there. And so by, you know, we kicked the can on purpose down the road just to try to, you know, make everything work if we can, and I think we're at the end of that. It'll be a good truck for somebody else, I think, but I think it's time for us to kind of go into something new.
Yeah, and two points. You know, one is the, three actually, thank you for the amount of work that has gone into the recommendation. Secondly, the, there is other funding sources that might come into play, whether it's ARPA or whether it's the resale of the current truck. And Jim, you make some good suggestions. I'd encourage you, rather than make individual calls to bankers, to maybe work with our finance team. So we have.
I set them off emails. They, it's just, I had time to, so I worked on, and I thought, well, let's look at other options. And I know, I failed the emails, Sharon, before me, EJ.
I did, yeah.
So that information has been forwarded off. I mean, I have these quick contacts. I made these quick contacts. I have them.
It's to benefit the taxpayers of Marshall.
Other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I totally agree with what Jim is saying. I mean, I support the truck as well, but 2025, we've got another bill coming in front of us with East Cali Drive Project, which will be a huge bill. So I think we need to, like Jim said, maybe take a step back for 30 days, get together with finance or finance, get together with somebody, and take a fresh look at how we're going to pay for the truck. We would not enter into an agreement to buy a road grader or a dump truck or something for the city of Marshall without knowing how it's going to be paid for. This also gives time for Quentin and his staff to maybe go after some of these grants, see what kind of response that they might have. They might get flat out told, nope, there's nothing available. Well, then we know that. And I'm just saying 30 days, you know. I think if we just take a step backwards and explore all the options, we're very adamant about doing business locally. If a bank wants to do business with us and lease us a fire truck for X amount of dollars a month or whatever the case would be, I think you could live with that in your budget. We could live with that in our budget, and I think it would be beneficial for the taxpayers of Marshall for possibly saving money. Because again, this could end up costing, I mean, the bid is 1.45 or 1.5 million, but you had another $300,000 for interest. That's 1.8. Maybe it's going to be $2 million by the time it's all done, if there's change orders, whatever the case would be. So I think that if you just, if we take a step back and let finance take a look at how possibly we could do this, and at the meantime, maybe Quentin, you and Jake could reach out to the provider and say, council wanted us to do some local research for financing. Can we get the price extended? Or, and if we have to call a special meeting, I think we can do that, you know, to let you know, so we don't delay the project. But I just think we need to find out how, and, you know, maybe it's not going to be paid for with anything, but, you know, then tax dollars are to pay for it.
EJ, is that background work you've already done?
I wasn't. Sharon did forward the information today. I did also call another local bank just to talk through the process of private placement debt versus bonding, et cetera. I'm open for whatever the council desires.
John, did you have something?
Yeah, just comments, a couple of things. You had mentioned that there'd be a price increase at the end of the month. Is that what you said? So end of October?
October is what we were told. I don't have anything in writing, Councilman.
So, okay. And so what we're talking about realistically, prepayment is a 4% savings.
Approximately.
Approximately 4% savings.
On the two devices, yeah. The chassis and that area, yep.
So, I mean, that could easily be offset if they did a who-knows-what percent increase, 5%, 10%, which, you know, some of the inflationary prices has been changed quite a bit.
Sure.
We're also looking at private financing versus municipal interest rates on GO bonds, so that's, that can chalk up very quickly. I, you know, this was a good discussion, you know, talk about options and financing, but I think in this case, we're coming out, you know, a good chance of losing it, honestly, in another six days. So I, you know, I'd be more inclined to go ahead with this and get the purchase in.
If they're willing to hold the price till 2025, I think they would hold it for another 30 days.
That would, if that's a possibility.
The only thing would be it's not, we're not contractually obligated, so then we wouldn't be held to that.
Correct. If you call up and say, we are going to probably buy this truck, we got to figure out how to finance it. As a businessman out there, most businesses say, well, you know, we're going to buy the truck, we just got to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
McQueen's proposal is valid for 30 days, but I don't see anything in Rosenbauer's.
I'm sorry?
I said McQueen's proposal, attached proposal is valid for 30 days, but I do not see, I do not see anything in.
I don't remember what the date was on that.
The data that they submitted it, that's not from the date that we're looking at.
Is there a date on there, Councilman? I can't see that.
August 10th.
Yeah, so we're way past that.
Yeah, past three days, yeah.
So we have a motion on the table for the aerial apparatus replacement. Does that motion still stand by the maker of the motion and whoever seconded that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have something more?
Two quick things here. I just want to follow up on Councilman Labatt's points. The FEMA grant, we won't know for approximately nine months to a year. We apply for that. I believe it's due in February-ish. They won't let those out until approximately this time next year. Talking with Administrator Hanson this afternoon, we discussed with the timeline going into 2025, essentially, it gives us another opportunity, if we do not receive the AFG grant this year, that we can actually reapply again next year and have another shot at it, essentially. We won't know that until the end of 2024. As long as we hadn't technically spent any money on it, we're still eligible that way. The other part of it is, and I don't want to get too far into that, the next council agenda item, but the ARPA funds, I believe Chief Marshall and I were planning, are planning to go to county commissioners here in the near future for the ARPA funding for that. And we are waiting until council is supportive of that before we go forward with that, because if the city council doesn't support that, this agenda item or that truck, then there's no point to go ask for the money from the council or from the commissioner. So this is kind of why we're here.
My last question. Quentin, to sell this truck, do we have any idea what it might, I mean, is it on a state bid or what? I mean, do we have any idea what it might be worth in two years?
Yeah, the. Yeah, the, the captain of the truck company, Austin Tuft, who's behind me, he actually did a little research on his own to try to find out a truck of that year and of this make and model, essentially, are going roughly for about $50,000. I think we, five zero, five zero thousand, 50,000. I think we have a little bit better chance of getting a higher figure for that. I can't say by much. I would say a good, good, good range would be between 50 and 100. And I know that's a big number, but I can't, I can't predict what people will spend on it. We, you know, it's a great truck. It, we have all the records from 1994, 1995, when the truck was built. We can tell you when the oil was low and at which month and what week of the month. It's insane. You, you remember how much time we spend on that. I think there's a value to that as well and there's a lot, it's low miles, so.
And that's what I was going to say, because memory serves me correctly, it's cost us about a quarter of a million dollars when we bought it. I could be wrong.
I think it was about 665,000.
Okay.
Or 700.
428,000.
428,000?
Remember when that purchase was made.
Yeah, and we put in, we just referred it for 100 and some thousands.
Yeah, it was 170, 165, yeah.
And like you just said, we've maintained that truck.
Exceptionally.
Exceptional, that's a good word. Could we possibly get 50,000? Yeah, could we possibly get 100,000? We won't know that until it comes available and.
I'm hoping to see six figures.
Depending who's looking for a truck like that, yeah.
Your, your previous ladder truck went to Granite Falls.
Correct. And they actually do, don't have, they, they don't have one to replace that current unit. But I did talk to the fire chief in Granite and they actually, their council's approved already going for a brand new aerial for them. So that's good for them.
Sharon, you have one more point?
I just wanted to add that whether financing local or through a general obligation bond issuance, there would not, we would not be able to give a recommendation on that until 2025 unless someone here knows the interest rate in 2025 today.
Right, exactly.
So I just want to clarify that. We can meet and talk all we want, there can't be a recommendation until 2025. And how to pay for it, whenever we look at bonding and CIP, which you'll see it, you know, levy, state funds, federal funds, at this point, it would be a combination of property tax, federal grant, and possibly ARPA funds, which we know that the last two are, are, are not a known at this point. But if we didn't get this, this would fall back on property tax, like our other infrastructure, where there isn't other revenue sources. That's how we do our CAP plan, especially in, in this domain and this area at this point. So I just want to clarify that again.
Thank you, Sharon.
I appreciate, I think that's, it's a great discussion about finance, but the bottom line is, is that all of that is a moot point if we're not buying a truck. And I think the bottom line is we agree we're going to buy a truck and we need to buy a truck, whether we do it now or put it off 30 days, doesn't change anything other than we go back to the vendor and ask him to wait again, but we're not going to make that finance decision between now and then. I think it's a great discussion, but it's, you know, when we're buying a grader, the grader's built and sitting on a lot, you know? So I mean, that's a great reference, but it, this is, this is different. We're specing this and we're going to watch it being built.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion that's on the table. Close the voting. I'm sorry.
Oh, I don't, thought I voted, but let's try.
Now we close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 10, which is the 2023 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Once again, Chief Quentin Brunsfeld.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. In the bid packet, or excuse me, the bid packet, in your council agenda packet, thank you, is a, an invoice for FEMA grant writing done by a local person. She lives up in Kensington, Minnesota is where she's from. She actually, you guys approved us to apply for a FEMA AFG grant this year for new radio systems, which is be about $230,000 roughly. And the idea behind that is if we don't get it, which we did not receive that grant for this year, if we do not receive that grant, we'll keep applying year after year to try to get that grant funding for that. So we did a little research to find out if we can also apply for the FEMA AFG grant for the, for this aerial apparatus. And yes, we can, which is good. So we're going to try for both, which gives us an opportunity also to, by pushing it, the, the back, excuse me, pushing the aerial back just a little bit into 2025 will give us hopefully another option to get a second round in if we don't get it the first time. It's cheaper the second time around essentially because as you can note by the radios for 2022, because it's a, she's already got it written. Just got to change a few numbers is all, which is kind of nice. So she also cut us a little bit of a deal on the aerial truck, about $1,200 for that. She has a lot of the information already, working with our finance department and, and making all that happen, which has been good. So I'm here for any questions, if there are any on that.
Okay, thank you, Quentin. What, questions?
So how much, when she writes a grant, who determines the value of the grant, the award? Is that just random or?
Yeah, we had to have bids at the time from, for the radios, we actually got it from West Central and it's rough estimates essentially.
So the grant could be for the full amount or the grant could be for part of them or you just don't know?
The grant's for the full amount of the replacement of the equipment or for the equipment, however, there is a 10% match on that.
So there's a potential the grant could cover, as you said, the aerial truck, they potentially could cover the full aerial truck?
Less the 10% match.
That'd be a deal.
That's what we're working on.
You could make her check for that.
No, you could.
But we disqualify ourselves if we, if we pay for anything in advance.
Okay.
So when I clarified with her about that, she, she basically said, just don't pay for any of the truck and we'll be good. Okay, well, that should be easy enough, essentially.
Well, we can get three years, she can, and she'll write this for three.
Well, if we don't get it this year, I'll come back again next year and ask for permission, basically, to, to do it.
On the radios, you've been asking for these for several years.
Well, this is, this, this will be the second year.
How good are your radios yet?
Well, they were built in, we got them in 2012. They're working. They're not supported after 2022. That's the challenge we run into that, that's why we're looking to replace them. We're probably one of the last cities in the, in the county to, to look into it, but we, we by far have the most amount of radios to replace.
So if we do not get the grant for the radios, that's something that we should consider replacing like soon?
I don't think so. I think it's a thing that we'll be okay with what we have. They're, they're pretty low maintenance for the most part. We run into the occasional hand mic that gets dropped on the ground or whatever, or the antenna, because we use them as handles to pull them out of chargers and things like that, that, you know, we have extra antennas quite often. Assistant Chief Anderson is very good at keeping up on that type of stuff. He's got a whole plethora of additional parts and stuff to, to fix what we have. About, about four or five years ago, on the radios, we actually saw a need that we needed more. We should actually have one radio for each seat placement in the truck. And when the grant was written initially, it was only for a certain amount, but it was also for the entire county. So there's lots of radios to plan for at that time. So there was only a couple radios per seated position at that time, and now the grant's written for every, every seated position. And so we actually went and found 18 of the same radios, XTS, Motorola XTS 2500s for like 5,000 bucks. And we went and bought them because we knew that we needed, needed them and it was a good buy. And we've had one that's kind of flaked out on us and, but other than that, or one or two, but other than that, they've been very, very well. And it also helps us when we do go ask FEMA for the additional funding. We have the radios there to prove that we need them and the seated placements.
There's a comment about funding that is available. The, I think as we all know, based on what Congress has done, there's a substantial amount of funding that is available through FEMA, through the IIJA, which is the Infrastructure Act, through the IRA, which is the Inflation Reduction Act. But the challenge is how do you access that? And that's where it really takes this grant writer to do. I was on a panel last week with four other mayors from Minnesota, and that was exactly the challenge. And all the state agencies were represented as respondents to that panel, and they all recognized that. And tomorrow, I'm on a panel with three other mayors with Senator Klobuchar on exactly the same point, that Congress has allocated this money, but it would be a shame if we couldn't access this money because of the complexity of the, of the process to access that. So that's why, you know, I commend you for, you know, getting some professional help because it does take a lot of work to access these funds.
These are the funds that are only 15% allocated as of right now, correct? Out of the total amount, I think they've only allocated 15%.
Well, 15% out of a trillion dollars is still a lot of money.
Yeah, but they're, but they've been at it for a year and a half and they've only put out 15%.
Right. Yeah. I believe the FEMA AFG grant's about $350 million a year roughly is allocated for this purpose of, typically goes for self-contained breathing apparatuses, truck replacements, things like that, radios, high dollar things that cost cities and municipalities a lot of money. So this is be our third time applying for it. Prior to that, in 2012, we did receive it, or 2011, we did receive it under Chief Clay. We got that grant for the whole county, which was really great. I've heard rumors that they haven't quite let out all the bid money yet essentially for this last round because there was 90 million that just became available from one of these additional acts that were passed, that they kept all of the, they kept all the applications and they're starting to award off of that still for that 90, 90 million. But if you can believe it from the government, they're not very great at communicating. So I have no idea where we're at on it. So we're just trying to put the cart in front of the horse and get this approved and get the grant written. If we, if we receive it, I'm sure she'll pay us back our 450 bucks and, or maybe we can use it as credit towards a future grant because I intend to use it for additional things that need replacement to help on the tax levy if we can.
Bob, I have a question for you. You brought up, would it help to get our U.S. representative possibly involved with this or not?
Short answer would be probably not.
Okay. Long answer.
I know in the past, we have received letters of support from our senators and representatives. I couldn't tell you if that helped us or not, to be honest with you. We've had that discussion.
I guess that, that would have been a better answer.
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, wouldn't hurt, whether or not.
Well, because I just know of different districts that, you bring up those grants, they've gotten money and I think District 7 here, I don't think our district has received much of anything out of that. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with us being the first to ask and get some.
Okay. Any other questions for Quentin? If not, I'd entertain a motion for the 2023 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant application.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting.
Thanks, Quentin.
And the motion passes. Yes, thank you. Move then to agenda item number 11, Consider the Health and Dental Insurance Renewals for 2023. Presenting this will be Sheila Dubbs, Human Resource Director for the city. Sheila?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to welcome Bill Chukuski, our broker for health and dental insurances here with us today. Since we reviewed the claims data and the renewal information in detail at the work session that we had on October 11th, I have asked Bill to do a high level overview of the information in your background materials. And then if you have any questions about that, you can certainly ask him. For both insurances, we have two-year agreements in place, which will expire on January 1st of 2024. The renewal information that Bill will share includes the employees from the city, the library, public housing and retirees. However, the city does not share in the premium costs for the library, public housing or retirees, just city employees. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Bill and then I'll come back and review the comparable information and the cost share proposals with you.
Okay, thank you, Sheila, and welcome, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So for the recap, two weeks ago, we went through all the insurance information. So I'm here this evening to answer any additional questions you may have. Just to give a quick recap, we did enter, as Sheila said, into a two-year agreement with both Blue Cross Blue Shield and Delta Dental, with a total savings to the city of $516,000 over what we would have had with PEAP, the previous insurance carrier. And since 2021, we are still 4.22% less than what we would have been at those rates. So I, I think we entered into a very good agreement and hopefully we'll be able to do the same next year when we go up for RFPs. At the bottom of the, of the slide there, it just gives you a recap since 2018 where we've been and then shows you the dental rates.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for your negotiation on this. Open up for questions. If not, this was thoroughly discussed at a work session two weeks ago. I would entertain a motion.
I saw move. I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John, for the approval of the Health and Dental Insurance Renewals for 2023. Discussion on that motion?
Right now, we pay 100% of the employees' dental, correct?
Sheila, would you clarify?
Eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty, twenty.
Eighty, twenty? Okay, thank you.
Other discussion?
The motion is for option A, as I am assuming?
There's two options on there.
Play your motion.
Option A.
Option A.
Yeah, option A, yes.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number 12 is the 2025 MinDOT College Drive Improvement Project. Before this is a resolution for the municipal consent and layout approval. This is for the intersection at Bruce Street and College Drive. Jason, Anderson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Yeah, I can give a brief introduction before turning it over to Jesse Valomic, our MinDOT Project Manager. The council may remember that we did a layout approval a little over a year ago, and that was generally for the reconstruction limits between Fourth Street and just west of Bruce Street. MinDOT was gracious enough to include the Bruce Street intersection and some extra area for the city marshal to allow us to address some utility needs, and that's what we're here to discuss. I can turn it over to Jesse.
Welcome, Jesse.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. City council members, Jesse Valomic, Minnesota Department of Transportation, Project Manager. Here basically requesting city approval by resolution for the final layout flap that the city has requested for the Bruce Street intersection. So with that, the State Project 420440, Reconstruction of Highway 19, College Drive from Fourth Street to Bruce Street, remains as approved. Like you said, the city approved on August 24th, 2021, with the addition of the final flap. It includes the reconstruction of Bruce Street intersection and portions of Bruce Street as requested by the city to accommodate city utility repairs. And then the intersection basically remains the same as it is today, with the addition of some pedestrian curb ramp improvements and updates to the signal system, which will ultimately bring the total cost for the city to an estimated cost of approximately $5.2 million, as I shared in the packet. Questions by the city council or myself or Jason? Questions?
So the, I have a quick question. The alleys going to be closed between, I'm fine with, but that alley isn't going to get closed off?
Which alley?
The one that says closed on it, between Minnesota and Bruce Street?
The one that goes.
It's currently an alley.
Well, that, that's, goes into the Alvera parking lot.
Oh, it does. You're correct. That is gone. You're correct.
Yep, so we're closing that.
I'm dating myself now.
The right turn lane that's there.
The second question I have is coming from College Drive going east, is there any particular reason, you got two through with the one being through right? Is there any particular reason you just can't make that a right turn lane? Is there any particular reason you just can't make that a right turn lane? Going, heading east on 19?
So, heading to the east, right there.
Because you got, turning on the Bruce Street, if we could just, can a guy make that just a right turn lane and just have one through lane? So you don't bottleneck up traffic because you do get people trying to make a right turn there and they get impatient sitting behind other people at the red light.
I see what you're saying. I can bring that up with our traffic department.
Other than that?
You know, Councilman, I think today it actually might be.
I think that's the way.
Right only today. I think, I think it is.
I think it's supposed to be, I don't know if it is, no, it's not, because I go straight there.
I, well.
I'm one of the people that talks.
You want to change?
He's listening.
But not illegal because it's not an arrow there. It's not, it is not a right only.
I'm not so sure.
I don't know. But I just, I just look at it.
Layout for you or Jason, the hard copy?
Jason. The other thing I would add, Jesse, I know you were involved in this, too, the, you know, thanks to MinDOT for the RAISE grant application. They were the sponsor and RAISE is an acronym that I can't remember what it is right now. Reinvest is the first word. But anyway, it's, it would have paid for up to half of this. That was the only application, I believe, that was, came from MinDOT District Eight. So thank you for the sponsorship. The, I believe there's the opportunity to resubmit in the future, so.
Yeah, so we, I'm currently working, kind of ironic, with SRF, who is our design consultant on our project here. SRF is also doing some additional work, looking into not only this project, but additional projects that we could apply for grants. So I've already plugged all the information in and we're trying again to solicit money for both MinDOT and the city.
Yeah, and I know MinDOT District Eight was really pretty optimistic about that grant application and was quite disappointed when it was turned down. So hopefully next time we'll have a good shot.
Yes.
It might have just been timing.
I'm going to like this.
Right. So thank you. Other questions for Jesse? We really appreciate the partnership with MinDOT and your work on this. I would entertain a motion for the municipal consent and layout approval.
Motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Commission Board, the ASON report, actually mine have not met since we last met. Craig?
Mine have not either.
Scott, or Steve. Wait, I called you Scott.
Scott, yeah.
Dr. Scott.
Dr. Scott, yeah. Hold on a second, let me pull it up here. So the EDA did meet on the 19th. We talked mostly a lot about the school referendum. You know, when you talk economic development, schools and public schools do come in because we need good students and good schools to draw good employees and good workers into town. And so Jeremy Williams and, I can't remember who else presented. Bill Swob, yeah, how did I forget Bill? Was here and they told us and made a great presentation about the need for it, the importance of it, and pitched for us. The second thing we talked about was Market Street Mall. There are some groups looking into developing that. That's enough to be said about that right now. There's still a lot of work going on, what needs to be done. The one thing for sure that that mall needs is a completely new roof. Anybody who has a flat-roofed building realizes that these do not last for very long. As a former tenant of that building, when we were there with our clinic, I can tell you that we experienced many leaks back then and that we moved out of there in 2013. So it's probably only gotten worse. Broadmore Valley submitted a grant. They're asking for an additional $5 million from their sources, more to come on that. And then I won't take the whole thing. I'll let Councilman DeCramer talk about some things too, because there was a lot talked about. My community services board did not meet.
Thank you, Steve. Amanda?
Planning commission did not meet. Hasn't yet.
Okay, MMU did meet. They received the draft of the 2023 electric and water cost of service, or actually report on the, the cost of service. And there will be a public hearing coming up, I believe, at the next MMU meeting in November to discuss that. Just a brief hint on that, the electric call does not change. This is a three-year study that was done on the cost. There's, they're recommending a 0% increase for the electrical rate and a, it's an overall 5% increase on the water. It's, that's a little bit more complicated. You really want to attend the public hearing to get all the details on that or take a look at the report because it's, some of it is in the residential area, some of it's in commercial and other areas. Along with that, they had a considerable discussion. They had received a wage study report a while back and they're, you know, deep in discussions on the, the wage scale for their budgets. They're still working away diligently on that and trying to get that done. The Public Housing Commission did also met, and that was about a week later than usual. One of the, the major items was the facilities around Marshall went through a very extensive review and inspection. And upon completing that, they did pass their inspection, which is a good accomplishment. There are some things that need to be resolved. Some of it is tenants were not to put obstructions in front of the windows. In one case, there was a bed in front of the window and that had to get moved. A few areas which may get involved, they need to take care of some trip cases on the sidewalk and I believe doing some of the mudjacking, things like that may be in there. So Jason, there may be some contact with you at some time and as far as when the city as well has some of that work done, that maybe, you know, the housing could get some of that taken care of on some of their sidewalks that they've got. So they're looking at that versus replacing it, whatever. So, but this was a, a very extensive inspection that they've gone through and many details. They go into each one of the buildings and look at sample, examples in each one and come back and they did, say they did get a passing inspection on that. So that's very good.
Related to the sidewalks, they would, public housing would be eligible for the cost share program for the sidewalk replacement program.
Very likely, but.
I'd just point out too, there, the mud, there's a mudjack company in town right now.
Oh, okay.
If there's interest to work right now. I imagine they're still around.
Oh, all right. I, that was going to be one of my.
Otherwise, next year.
One of my questions afterwards, if you know when they're coming, but they're here now, so.
I can get you contact information.
All right, that'd be good. I'll pass that on. So I think that's it. I don't have any more to add on the EDA. Councilman Meister did a very good job of covering everything there, so.
Russ? Thank you.
CVB, Visit Marshall, met, we had, we listened to a presentation from Preston Stensour's or Park Department regarding the cultivating the best in play and the possibly of Visit Marshall, CVB, helping out with what's going to happen next, maybe at Independence Park. So a very good presentation was well received by the board. Also, a recap on Prairie Jam 23, even though it was, excuse me, 22, even though it was a very short timeframe, they feel very comfortable and satisfied with their response. They did get a little disappointed in the, in the number of tickets that were sold, you know, preliminary, but I think we found out that sometimes the Marshall people don't like to buy tickets in advance, so they'd rather buy them at the door, so. But overall, they, they were very satisfied with, with what happened. In fact, we plan on doing it again in 2023 and the committee is going to start meeting and looking at entertainment options and things like that. So they're going to be having a board retreat tomorrow and they will be meeting, I think, late in the morning, mid-afternoon at the Red Baron Arena, talking about what the priorities are for Visit Marshall, CVB. Positive note, dasher sales at the arena were up $3,000 over last year, so. And we did talk about the, the CVB board ordinance and I think maybe that Cassie sent a response to you sharing that regarding we'd like one more hotel person on there versus at the chamber, so. My Lyon County Transit Advisory Meeting, they did meet and at the last minute, I was not able to attend. If you recall, a couple of months ago, they were on a high, on a high peak in saying that we hired three new drivers and the routes were going to be, start being filled. Well, the end of October, where they lost two more drivers, that service cannot be put back on the road. So we're going to suspend the red route and dial-a-ride on Saturdays. Saturdays dial-a-ride averaging about six passengers per four-hour shift and the red route ridership is light. So they're doing, temporarily suspend the dial-ride and red route on Saturdays until more staff can be hired. So again, they're faced with the same amount, or same problem that a lot of businesses in town are finding people to do it. The new schedule that, with these will take effect in November 6th. Basically, when more drivers are hired, services will be brought back in order, including the blue route first, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then run the red route later in the day during the week and finally bringing back the red route on weekends along with Saturday dial-a-ride. So anybody out there listening to this and, and maybe has a class, Class B, Class D, whatever it is, license, you know, they want to drive bus for, please contact Lyon County Advisory or Transit Committee. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
If it is acceptable with the council, I would like to add an agenda at this time, Agenda item, that would be appointments to boards and commissions. Is that okay with everyone?
It's good.
The, earlier this evening, the council met in special session and interviewed applicants for the Airport Commission and the Planning Commission. Based on those applications and the interviews, I would recommend that Dr. Quinton Brunsville be appointed to the Airport Commission for.
Fixon.
What did I say?
First name.
Quinton Fixon be appointed to the Airport Commission for a term that would expire May 31st, 2025, and that Gabriel Piper be appointed to the Planning Commission, and that term would also expire May 31st, 2025. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig?
Nothing.
Steve?
Nothing.
Amanda?
Nothing.
I have a couple of things, and the first one is, and this is, Bob, maybe you can help out with two. As I, you know, I drive back and forth and it irks me that we drive around Marshall, we have none of the blue information signs. But we drive up past Womer and I think there's one that points to a tire store and one that points to a, a church along 23. And, and then I got to St. Cloud and there's one that points to a golf course that you can physically see. If you run off the road, you go right into the golf course. And I know you're on the Highway 23 Commission. Can we somehow work that we can get some of those information signs around? Because we have a four line, just like they do, pointing to our, our merit center. I'm not even asked for our golf course, but like to the merit center, to, you know, Aveira Clinic or something. I don't understand why Marshall is excluded from information signs along the 23 corridor.
Yeah, that's a good point, one that's been brought up. Jason, you want to make any comments about that?
You know, there may be some things that would meet the criteria. MinDOT does have a pretty specific policy for where and how those signs get placed. You know, when you say merit center, that's one that I could see it could actually qualify. But, you know, if you're inside the city limits and you're going along by Highway 59, you're not going to get them to approve pointing a bunch of arrows to different types of stores. It just won't work. But there are situations where I think you bring up, there may be some qualifying examples.
So we can look into that, actually. The Highway 23 group meets tomorrow morning at 10:00.
And to support, because Jim and I have, what, six months we've been kind of back and forth on this thing? So just as the discussion goes, because I know Jasmine for the merit center, there's been a lot of frustration about people not being able to find where to turn. And I can think of at least five points off of either 59 or 23.
Or 68.
Or 68, where you'd want to direct them over there. So driving to Cold Spring, you know, I take a little bit of what Jim's trip is all the time, going farther north than what I do, but going to Cold Spring-St. Cloud area and I drive by and I see coming through Spicer and it says Town and Country Tire. And as soon as I look over the top of the sign, there's Town and Country Tire. And I'm like, really? And I know that Jasmine actually went to DOT, one of the regional headquarters, I believe in Inver Grove Heights, and testified there requesting the sign. And before she got home, they sent her the denial with no explanation about the denial. And then I drive by and the only thing I can think of is the DOT regional person or district person that approves them must live in Spicer or has their friends that own, I know, I got three or four of them noted in my notes, and they're very private businesses that are noted here. They're not even a public, with public dollars invested destination point that would have a lot of out-of-town people.
Blue signs are paid for, though. Those are, those are signs, I, my understanding from past discussions, if they're blue and white, those businesses pay for those signs.
Okay.
What? They're certainly willing to pay for it.
Okay, and, 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 yeah.
And the brown, the brown are in, are informational.
Right, so like possibly our 9/11 memorial, Memorial Park could, could get the brown sign without payment. But I'm pretty sure the blue and white businesses pay for that.
And the ones I'm thinking is the blue signs, because we have, and maybe that's something our business have, but there's none, like I bring up, as, as 23 now opens up between Painesville and Rockville, you're seeing more of those. And that's where I saw the golf courses, like if you drive off the road, you're in hole nine, so why do you need a sign? Right, but it's, there is like a brown one there, and I believe it's brown, talks about the 9/11 artifact and the community park.
Yes.
At Rockville.
Yes.
And, and that's very appropriate. And I think I called you on that one when I drove through. Why don't we have a, our 9/11? And my wife, just the day before you called me on it, my wife and I were on our way back from up by Brainerd and swung in and actually spent a little time at that, at that artifact. Because I know there's one off of Highway 53, the Paul Wellstone Memorial, there's a brown sign that points out, where actually 20 years ago, you meant its demise yesterday. So we want to get a couple of our best guys on it, being as we have somebody that sits on the 23 corridor committee and engineer that has a great relationship. If we could dig into that again, I think it would be.
I think if the, from my perspective, if the council had specific things that you wanted to request that I look into, I can look into specifics, like merit center signage on state highways.
I think merit is the most critical piece that, that comes to my mind, that I know we've attempted and gotten turned down. And it frustrates me because I can't understand why that would be less significant. I believe, and I don't want to quote, you know, I don't want to speak for Jasmine, but I believe what they implied or inferred to her is that, well, we haven't, we don't know that anyone hasn't been able to find it. Jasmine's like, they're complaining about it to me all the time that we're hard to find.
Right.
The policy definitely differs between rural and urban setting.
Sure.
That's part of it. We can certainly look into the merit center and make a request. I know we had looked into the memorial park a while back. I would have to look and see where that correspondence died. I don't remember how far along we got there.
Well, and it, and then it would be nice to know, if it needs to be a blue sign, what's the cost of a blue sign?
And we also have, Jason attends these meetings. I'm on this board for the MinDOT ATP8, so we'll, that would be the, probably the better group to bring that up than the Highway 23 Coalition, so.
Yeah, we certainly have access to people. We can ask the questions. We just need to know what direction we're trying to go.
Yeah, all right, thank you. And Bob, since you brought up the Highway 23 Coalition, I want to compliment you guys have done great work in slowly getting to Marshall, but that road is getting much more drivable. It's easier, safer, because now you're stretching from Painesville, now that you're connecting Painesville to Womer next year, that we're getting good connections to the interstate system. So compliment your coworkers there. As the 212 going into the cities now, I believe just about stretched to Glencoe with 4 Lane. I know it's a struggle to get that money. They've actually, they actually striped the eastbound lane last week on that. So we're slowly, I mean, in another 75 years, we should have 4 Lane to Marshall.
On 212, the one remaining gap, which is by Bongard.
It is a short gap there, but I believe that gets filled next year.
Scheduled to begin construction in 2024.
So your coalition, I want to compliment you guys on your struggle to get the money here. And also the Highway 14, you know, because I know we're part of the, that's all part of the corridors of commerce piece. And, and that one also is going to, soon to open, I believe, between New Ulm and Nicollet, so kudos. Do, do good. Now, the last thing I have is on a little lighter note, just to remind the citizens, next Monday is Halloween. Watch out for all our little pumpkins and trick-or-treaters and stuff, because people drive fast. I know Jim Marshall, your officers will be out protecting our little trick-or-treaters. Yeah, look out for the hot rod Mustang that's over off of East Marshall Street. Anyway, on that. Jim, are you guys handing out the big candy bars at your house?
Thank you, Jim. Russ?
I don't know if I can follow all that.
Pressure is on.
I just want to compliment our Community Services Recreation Department. I think Councilman Meister and I were out watching the seventh and eighth grade boys' football program at SMSU last weekend and, and I've been told that in past years, it's been cold, it's been rainy, it's been snowing, everything else, but this year was absolutely beautiful. Brought a lot of people into town, parents, grandparents, and out-of-town people. I think the eighth graders played mini-ota and they, yeah, but very well attended. There was cars parked like a, almost like a typical. I think the eighth graders played miniota and they, yeah, but very well attended. There was cars parked like a, almost like a typical Saturday after Saturday evening Mustang football game. So a lot of people in town and compliment everybody that, that took care of getting all of that to see those kids play. Councilman DeCramer, I, you're probably going to bring this up, but we had a request about the spectrum service in one area town that, that they asked that the cable commission look at that it's, there's no spectrum service out in one area town out by Cold Stone and things like that. So, yeah. So they, and then the other thing somebody brought up, maybe Jason, what's happening along Highway 23 with our used car parking lot? Any update or, I mean, it, it's, I don't want to say it's looking shabby, but it's, you know, that for a while there it wasn't, they looked like they were making a little bit of progress, but lately there's nothing there and it's just a bunch of used cars parked there.
Yeah. You know, I would say communication hasn't been great. Going into winter, we've just talked about it within the last couple of weeks as a staff with the building department. And, you know, at this point in time, going into winter, there's not a lot we're going to do. But, you know, we probably need to address this going into the spring about what the game plan is to finish what we were told would be started, which is a paved surface, lighting, a proper sales lot. So that, that would help it be compliant with the ordinance.
Okay.
You know, we've been a little lenient on the driveway access, seeing how that circle is gravel at this point. That circle is on the CIP for reconstruction next year, if the council follows through with that project. So that would help and that would obviously put the driveway access in place.
We'll continue to plow that little circle with snow in the wintertime, but that's about, that's it?
To the best of our ability. You know, sometimes when it gets a little soft, they have trouble in there with the heavy equipment. But yeah, we will.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
Thanks, Russ, for bringing up that spectrum. I think did pass that on. So do some follow up and see what we can find out there. Haven't got an answer on that yet. Just point out that some of the work on the DEI commission, you'll notice some videos going out, various languages talking about voting and how to do the voting, things like that. So those have started and you'll see those just put on the various websites. So thanks to the help of Studio One, I believe, and Alex and getting those out. And, and really the work of some of the subcommittees of the DEI committee, commission. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, John. We'll move on to the remaining, well, excuse me, we'll go to staff reports. Sharon?
You know, John's was so short, I wasn't prepared for, for, for my report. I usually have more to say. Anyway, just some informal conversations about pickleball in the community. Our recreation department has found some options in November and December, but as basketball gets heated up, gym space becomes limited. So we did, the mayor and I and our EDA director did look at what Wilmer is constructing in terms of indoor recreation. And they have a multi-use facility that they're working on. It has basketball and of course pickleball as well. So some of those.
Facility, not to interrupt, that facility was funded along with some other recreation things with the extension to their local option sales tax.
Yep. So anyway, it was good to kind of see that facility. And other work this past month has just been some personnel discussions on staffing and, and benefits. And I know some of that has come to the council. And I appreciate council member DeCramer bringing up the election info. I know that was a diversity, equity, inclusion commission recommendation. And it was nice to see something being put on our website. And we'll, we'll do some social media posts on that as well. So that's all I had. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I can start with the chloride grant update, as we're all aware. We've got an MPCA grant with roughly $100,000 in actionable funds to use. We've probably expended around $10,000 of those funds to date in rebates or optimizations, software, software replacements. We are opening up the, the replacements. We started out by only allowing timer based units to be replaced to make sure we get the worst units taken care of. We're now transitioning into allowing more units to be replaced. If they're older units, like 15 years old, they're, they're fair game. You just have to have them installed by one of our approved contractors. That's for the PCA's benefit essentially for reporting. Working on that, Scott Trudson and his team are hard at work with that. And they've got some radio ads that they've worked with some other people on our team to get out and those will start tomorrow. Baldwin parking lot behind City Hall is paved. That's great. The street department's doing some ceiling, striping, signing, different work like that. Hopefully by the end of the week, we can get it opened. Holber, South First, Greeley, Williams, the one block of West Lyon, all these projects are substantially complete. And hopefully we can get some final paperwork and, and things buttoned up and brought back to the council. RRFB project with the school crossing enhancements, I'm told the signage should be in tomorrow, which is a good thing. The contractor has to put it together and get it installed. I don't have a schedule for that yet, but I think very soon we'll have those, that sign infrastructure installed. So looking forward to that. Lastly, we did open bids for the Channel Parkway resurfacing project, concrete paving project last week on Thursday. Bids came in a little higher than anticipated. Roughly 3.8 million is the total bid amount. Almost $700,000 overestimate. So city staff is just taking additional time before we come back to council with a recommendation. We're working with our finance staff and EJ and just talking about what our, what our options and opportunities are, as well as communicating with our district aid, state aid engineer, because it is a state aid funded project. So we all know we have a advanced account balance and we're just trying to see how this fits or doesn't fit and what our options and opportunities are. Naturally, we want to pave the road as a concrete surface, utilizing our grant as we, as we started down the path of doing. Best long-term thing we can do for the pavement, but we just want to evaluate the, what we need to do in the next 10 or 15 years and what our account balance is and how this can all coexist. So hopefully we have something to discuss at the next meeting on November 7th.
Okay. Question for Jason. Dennis?
Thank you. Nothing, nothing has changed on the Helena property. And the mediation with the Attorney General's Office of Broadmore Valley did not result in any, any changes. So that'll be back on the court docket shortly.
Okay. Questions for Dennis? If not, we'll move to the remaining information items on the agenda. They include the library board, September minutes, the report of cash and investments, a, a letter of correspondence from the Kissimmee Utility Board of Directors. John, you may want to comment on that from utilities, as well as then the building permits are listed. John?
Yeah, just noted, I think last meeting I mentioned that three of our members of Marshall Municipal Utilities went down to Florida to help out with Hurricane Ivan repair and apparently worked in the Kissimmee District Utility Authority Districts. Nice to see you. Thank you. And guys made it back safe. Everything was good. So they got a lot of, a lot of work done. And it's, again, it's kind of interesting. They see again why we went underground and not above ground. So.
Well, they can't really go underground in Florida.
No, they can't there. Not unless they pour water.
Well, thank you, John. The, is there anything else to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting.
It'd be Amanda.
Wait, I get in there.
Passes, we are adjourned.